Okay, good evening. Welcome to the West Turlock Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency Board of Directors Meeting of June 3rd, 2021. I call this meeting to order at 5:00 PM. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 crisis and pursuant to executive order N-29-20, this meeting is being held by conference call without a physical meeting location. This meeting was noticed in accordance with the Brown Act. In addition to a physical posting of the agenda at 333 East Canal Drive, the meeting was noticed on turlockgroundwater.org and emailed to the sub-basin's ongoing interested parties list. This meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the Turlock Groundwater YouTube channel and also posted on turlockgroundwater.org. The board secretary is taking minutes as well. Materials are available at turlockgroundwater.org. We encourage public participation during this board meeting. We'll receive public comment during the public comment period. A portion of the agenda, feel free and use the raise hand feature if you like. If you're only using the phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone. With that, let's get the meeting started with board member roll call followed by participant.
Good evening, directors.
Did you not follow the rule?
Okay, Director Odom.
Yeah.
Okay, Director Madonado.
Present.
Director Lopez. Director Lopez. Director Larson.
Present.
Director Azbinoza, let us know that he would not be in. Director Buck.
Present.
Director Alvarez.
Here.
Secretary Keha. Secretary Keha. Vice Chair Gerizma.
Present.
And Chair Alamo.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Great, thanks Fay. Now for the participant list, we can see who's attending in the participant panel. But if there are any participants on that list who voluntarily would like to identify themselves, please do so at this time. Okay, seeing none. Oh, go ahead. Sorry about that.
Jaime City, Houston.
Welcome Jaime. Anyone else? Okay, then let's move this thing along. Let's go to item C, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 13th, 2021. Do I have any comment? Otherwise, we will entertain a motion to approve. Anyone want to give me a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
I make a motion to approve the minute of regular, of May 13th, 2021.
Okay, I've got Miguel or Director Alvarez on the motion. Director Larson, was that the second?
Yeah, I'll second that. Perfect.
Okay, so Alvarez with the motion, Director Larson with the second. Any additional comments? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you. Public comment period. Interested persons in the audience are welcome to introduce any topic within the agency's jurisdiction. No action may be undertaken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, except that the board may briefly respond to the comment, refer the matter to staff, or request that it be placed on a future agenda. Do we have any public comment at this time? If so, please identify yourself and proceed with your comment. Going once? Going twice? Okay, no public comment. We'll move on. Staff updates. Joint Tac update, Mr. Cook.
Yes, good evening, Vice Chair Gerizma and Agency Directors. Herb, may I maybe share my screen yet?
Say can. I'm going to stop sharing mine, give it a second, and then you should be able to.
Ever see my presentation? It's in display mode. I can't see on my screen. It's presently.
We see it. It is. It's in presenter mode. And.
About that?
Now it's good. Thanks, Matt.
Okay, thank you, guys. If I may, Vice Chair Gerizma, I've got the first three items. We'll kind of blend them together to be more efficient.
You bet.
Is that okay?
You bet, sir.
Okay, thank you. And before I start, just want to let the directors know that potentially your next meeting, July 8th, we will be ready to release the first three chapters of the groundwater sustainability plan to the public. And what we would like to do is try and have a joint meeting of the West Turlock Sub Basin GSA and the East Turlock Sub Basin GSA, and have the consultants come in, present to both boards at the same time. And then, you know, release that information to the public. And obviously advertise as best we can to maximize public participation. So it's only a plan right now. We're still trying to finalize that. But if you can be available on the 8th, it's your regular meeting, and it may be a joint meeting with our colleagues from the East Turlock Sub Basin. And then also, just let you know on item F, Walt Ward from Sanzos County will not be able to present tonight. Unfortunately, he's had a trip to the dentist, which is made him unable to make a public presentation, but Lacy McBride from Merced County will be here to make her presentation. And also just finally want to thank Fay. This will most likely be our last meeting with her as our clerk. She's not really going anywhere, just her job responsibilities have changed a little bit at Sanzos County, which makes her unavailable to the GSA. So I want to thank Fay for her hard work and dedication, helping us out through this difficult time.
Thank you very much, Fay. We appreciate all that you've done for the board.
You're welcome, directors.
So with that, real quickly, just have a number of topics to go through. What's happened is, excitingly, is some important understandings between the East Truck and West Truck sub-basins have been reached for the two GSA tax. And certain benchmarks for managing the sub-basin have been established. I want to go through this with you real quick to see you understand them. Debbie covered steam, steam, stream flow interaction and chronic lower water levels last time. I'm going to cover some more, but just just to review what went through last time. Declining groundwater levels have increased seepage from the rivers. So as groundwater declines, that water gets backfilled with water from the rivers. This is what we're finding. And so the joint tac agreed on a minimum threshold, which I felt wrong, I just noticed, to maintain water levels along the Merced River at spring 2014 level. So that groundwater level along the Merced River is what we'll be striving to achieve over the next 40 years as we implement the sustainability plan. And this is what it'll look like. So spring 2014 is that minimum threshold for groundwater levels along the Merced. And then similarly, for chronic lowering of groundwater levels, the last drought was very informative for drinking water providers in the region. And so they found that in 2015, they're really scrambling to provide enough drinking water to their customers. And so the joint tac agreed on a minimum threshold of the 2015 groundwater levels as the minimum threshold for water levels as we go forward. So that's the level we'll be trying to achieve over the next 40 years, not going below 42015 levels as we move forward. And as Debbie mentioned, we've got time to get there, but that's what we're working towards. So here's the new ones we've been working on. The third one is the reduction of groundwater storage. What does that mean? Is our, is our supply of water depleting? Are we going to run out of water? We know that groundwater is a diminishing resource. And we have a condition of overdraft. What we have to analyze is whether that overdraft is significant and unreasonable. And the challenge with that is there's no real definition of significant and reasonable, but we get to define that locally here. And so just to give you an idea of what groundwater storage means, that blue line along the top is the level of groundwater in the Truck Sub Basin as of October 2015. And then the dash line lower down, the black line lower down, black dash line is the base of fresh water. So the area between those two lines is the volume of fresh water in storage in the Truck Sub Basin. So DWR estimates that to be about 30 million acre feet. And it's declined by about 1.5 million acre feet over the last 25 years. So one could argue that, hey, we've only reduced our available water supply by 5%. That's really no big deal. And therefore, reduction of groundwater and storage is no issue. And Merced Sub Basin and others have taken that approach. The approach that the Turlock or the joint tax have taken in Turlock is we recognize that we're not at risk of depleting the fresh water supply entirely. There's plenty below our feet. However, there is an overdraft that requires mitigation. This, you know, sigma means the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, and overdraft is not sustainable groundwater management. And so the approach the joint tax have taken is to use that same minimum threshold we established for chronic lowering of groundwater levels using 42015 water levels as indicator. And other people have done this. The Delta Mendola is a good example. And so the goal is to arrest the decline of groundwater levels to maintain that same volume of water in storage over time. And as Debbie noticed last time, you know, we can temporarily go below 2015 levels as long as we have a plan or a mechanism to recover over time. So during droughts, we may go below 2015 levels. As long as we have plans and projects and programs in place to recover during the better years, that's, that's the key with the sigma regulations. And so just to give you that idea, there as long as we keep that blue line generating the same level, we won't reduce the amount of groundwater in storage. And it's just, you know, basic bank account type stuff. You can't spend more than you want. Okay, this is what, this is what it will look like in the plan, and you'll be seeing that similar. So the goal is to avoid the long-term overdraft by maintaining water levels at 2015 level. Okay, moving on. The hard one now is the sustainable yield analysis. So what is sustainable yield? It's the amount of groundwater that can be withdrawn without having undesirable results. And it's a single value. It's calculated based on why we're using the groundwater model to help us with that. And it's an iterative process. We keep tinkering with it till we get the number that we think works based on the model. And so again, like, like a bank account, we can't spend more than you are. And this is what it looks like in a model, and I know there's a lot going on here, but just to simplify, the chart on the left shows the projections going forward. So I know the years at the bottom show the past, but basically what we do is the big groundwater is the supply of the past mirroring the future in terms of available supply. And then above the line up here is where we pump and use that supply. And we figure out what impact that is going forward. As you see on the, on the black line, over time, the volume of water and storage actually declines. So when we get to the end of the 40-year period, we have less groundwater in storage than we started with. So we spend more savings account. The goal is to get to the end of the 40-year period with the same or more water in storage that you had when you started with. And so the way to do that is to reduce, at least in this first phase, is to reduce demand. So reduce the amount of pumping to make sure we're sustainable at the end of the 40-year period. And so basically what we do there is take those green bars here on this chart on the right and reduce the amount of groundwater pumping till we get to a point where the black line equals zero. And that's the, the first step in the process. So who is that applied to? Who is, who has to reduce their pumping? So at this high-level analysis, the consultant basically took two groups of users. Those who have access to surface water and those who are groundwater-only dependent users. So as you can see in group one, those with access to surface water are Truck, Merced Irrigation Districts, and the riparian water users along the rivers. And the group two users are those who only have access to groundwater. So that's primarily the urban agencies as well as Eastside Water District, Tez Water District, and non-district agriculture who rely solely on groundwater for their sources of supply. And so again, this is a high-level analysis. We just looked at two types of users, and the pumping restrictions will reapply to the group two users. So again, what does that look like? So if you look at the second line, it shows that those group two users right now are projected to typically use about 200 or pump about 260,000 acre feet per year of groundwater. And then we look at if we reduce that amount of pumping, what does that mean? So if we, option one, we up that pumping by 25%, option two, 30%, option three, 35%. And so what does that mean in terms of reduced pumping? So at 30%, you're pumping 79,000 acre feet less per year. At 45%, it's 115,000 acre feet. So, and, and the goal with that pumping reduction is to maintain water levels along the Merced River at the spring 2014 level. So that's the most restricted criteria we have. So the goal is to reduce pumping such that we're not adversely impacting the Merced River. That is the most sensitive sustainability criteria we have that we're dealing with. And so what, because, so this is how the consultant runs the model. They take a couple wells up there kind of in the top right-hand corner of your screen. They look at reduce pumping in that general area. What does that do to, or pumping in the sub-basin? What does it do to water levels? You know, how much pumping do we have to reduce to get that, the water levels back up or at no worse than spring 2014 levels? So what does that look like? What they did by reducing demand, they figured out, first off, that the sustainable yield for the Truck Sub Basin, so this is groundwater yield, is about 311 to 320, 323,000 acre feet per year. And then we'd have to reduce groundwater pumping by 35 to 40% to meet the sustainable management criteria. So to stop having any adverse impacts to groundwater levels along the Merced River, which in turn start, you know, increasing the amount of seepage out of the Merced River. So it's a significant reduction. Anybody who's on entirely on groundwater in order to comply with the sustainable yield analysis would have to reduce pumping by 35%. But there's a, there's a big but here. This is, and this is basically an exercise that the sigma regulations put us through. So it's kind of in my worldview, you have a worst-case scenario. If nothing changes, what would we have to do to be sustainable? And that would be to reduce pumping by 35 to 40%. And really, it's kind of a, it's doing surgery with a hatchet and not a, not a scalpel. So there's a basically a 91,000 acre feet per year deficit. It's on the next slide. It's like a 91,000 acre feet per year deficit. So the amount of pumping versus recharge about 91,000 acre feet. What we can do is, you know, phase one is look at demand reduction, but then we get into phase two, which we'll bring to you over the next couple of months. We'll be looking at, okay, what are the projects and management actions can we take to either increase the, the supply of water or increase conservation or whatever else? So there's a more balanced approach in phase two. So phase one's been completed. And we'll work on any supply-side projects. What could that look like? You know, what if we can recapture floodwater and proclade that back into the ground? And things like that, where we could actually increase the volume of groundwater in our sub-basin. So I don't want to alarm you with that initial phase one analysis, but it does have to be done. But it does give you, again, that worst-case scenario of how we comply with sigma in our sub-basin. And then the next sustainability criteria is groundwater quality. And so basically, how increasing levels of contaminants could impair water supply? And so basically though, what we have to do, unlike say drinking water providers as a, as a groundwater sustainability agency, we just have to analyze how our projects and programs could have an adverse impact on water quality, and how could we avoid any adverse impacts? And so the constituents of concern in our sub-basin are listed here. Many of you, particularly those in the drinking water business, will recognize many of these. And so what we have to make sure is any project or programs that we as a GSA undertake, don't worsen the level of contamination from these contaminants. Okay, so, and it's a bad example, but you know, if we we're doing a groundwater recharge project right next to, well, let's pick on Hillmore County Water District, just, just because the vice chair is here. And they already have a, an issue with, let's just say nitrates, because it's the top of the list. And we know we're recharging groundwater, we're recharging waters very, very high in nitrates. That's going into the groundwater supply and increasing the level of nitrates in Hillmore as well. We know that our actions are causing a problem. We have to mitigate that. But if Hillmore is having an issue with uranium, and we know it's not related to any of the products we're having through analysis, we can say, okay, what we're doing has, is not affecting water quality in the, in the Hillmore County Water District. So that's, that's our level of responsibility when it comes to water quality. So we're not like a drinking water agency. We have to mitigate those existing impacts. And so basically what we do is, is wells throughout the sub-basin that are being monitored right now for drinking water, sorry, just the general water quality, both ag and urban. And we just coordinate and get the data from those agencies and look at any trends in water quality and see if they're related to any of our projects. So as we work on projects, we'll make sure that any of our projects could not have an adverse impact on water quality in the basin. So again, using recharge as an example, if we were able to find some areas to do some, some groundwater recharges and stormwater, we would probably, you know, test the water we're putting into the ground and then do some groundwater quality monitoring around that recharge basin to see if it's having any adverse impacts. And we have put together a draft, which at the time we thought was the final criteria to put in our, our sustainability plan, but we did get some correspondence from Department of Water Resources that had some questions about our approach. I put draft on this, and we will address any concerns that DWR have before we finalize it and bring it back to you. So with that, I'll conclude. Your, your joint technical advisory committee has been very, very busy. We've made great progress on the plan recently and working well with the, with the East Truck Sub Basin. And again, your next meeting, we actually have the first three chapters of the plan released for public review. So with that, be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions out there for Michael? No? Okay, thank you for that, Michael, on the inter-basin coordination. I think that's you again, Michael. Yeah, or did we cover?
Yeah, that was covered in my report. Things more common along the Merced River. And the same, the GSP update. So I've covered those three items, I share.
Okay, any questions for Michael on any of the three items? Seeing none, we'll go to Herb for a public outreach update. Herb?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Gerizma. Three quick items here. The first is that we're still awaiting final word on the, the funding application request for the facilitation support services from the Department of Water Resources. Where we've been in contact with them and been in contact with their, their, the consultant or the contractor that they use, but we haven't received final word yet, so we're still awaiting that. And we know these things take time, so it's not of concern to us. We're just waiting to get word from the department. And then secondly, we're just gearing up, as you heard a little bit from, from Mr. Cook, related to, you know, the plans for release of the draft chapters of sections one, two, and four of the GSP. And we're gearing up on the website and through various promotional means on what that's going to look like and how we're going to get that out to the public and encourage stakeholder involvement. So we're working on that on the back end. And then lastly, the, the EDF, RCAC, Westerlock Sub Basin GSA Joint Water Leadership Institute that, that I've mentioned about in the past, started up in April. It's gone through seven of 15 weeks thus far. And I've had the opportunity to present, there was 10 participants in the class, which is pretty good considering it was recruited during COVID. I've had the opportunity to present three times thus far on subjects such as California water policy. And, and I presented twice on sigma in two parts. And then looking to present in the future, in, in coming weeks, on, on how drought has been managed in the past and where we're at currently with the, the status of statewide drought. And so that's something that continues and I'll continue to report out. It's been generally good sentiments from the group, generally good sentiments from the group. And, and then a lot of good questions. People are generally thankful for what's being presented. And then one other item that I wrote down that I didn't necessarily notice, things are starting to get kind of back to normal, I think, in a lot of ways, not particularly everything, but I have the opportunity, been asked to present on behalf of the, the GSA to the series Rotary next Friday in person. So that's a good way for us to start talking about some of the things we've been discussing related to the GSP and how people can comment. So that's my brief public outreach update, and happy to take questions or yield to the rest of the meeting.
Any questions for Herb?
Vice Chair, we do have someone with a raised hand. It's a phone number 535-1274.
Okay, that person, if they could go ahead and unmute themselves and make their comment, we'll take that now.
I'm double checking. You said 1274. I believe that even, I think I might even be Milt. Feel free to unmute Milt and speak. I'm not seeing you muted on my end here.
Okay, yes, I'm unmuted now, sorry. This is Milt Treewiler, Truck Citizen. Michael, I had a question for you. This is regarding the aquifer and the 1.5 million acre feet of available recharge space in the aquifer now that it's been depleted. As we recharge this aquifer, basically this is like an underground dam that we can fill back up because we emptied it up, just like when we emptied Don Pedro, we can fill up Don Pedro Dam. When we empty the aquifer, we will need to fill up the aquifer. Is that correct, Michael?
Yeah, we don't have to restore it back to where it was 25 years ago. But the goal is to make sure it's no worse than it was back in 2015. The, you know, the drought, severe drought we had back then, but you're right, it does create space for recharge, and a lot of the projects and programs we're looking at is how to find additional water supplies to recharge into that underground reservoir to, you know, get us through the difficult drier times.
So is it possible that one of the ways of recharging would be to irrigate the farmland in the wintertime when we had excess water rather than running it down the Tuolumne River, just run it into the canals? And so flow it over the water, I mean, over the land?
Yes, Milt, what that program's called on-farm recharge is what it's known as. And one of the projects, or ideas we're looking at through the groundwater recharge availability tool or assessment tool, the GRAT, as we, as we nickname it, is looking at that very program, finding, you know, stormwater in the winter that we can then put onto willing growers' land, which will then percolate and recharge the aquifer. It's a very simple way to improve aquifer conditions using water, which right now we basically try to get rid of, right? It's a potential flood. We're trying to get rid of it. How can we maybe divert some of that and use it for recharge? And other, other parts of the state have done that. Madera, Madera's looking at that or doing that. And so we're trying to look at that program and implement it here over time.
Right, and I was actually thinking of using water that we have to spill out of Don Pedro, like in 2017, 18, when we had a lot of water in the dam, rather than running that down the Tuolumne, we could just run that into canals in the wintertime and put that on the fields. I think a lot of the fields would be able to accept that water. I don't believe it's damaging to almond tree roots or grape, grapevine roots. I'm not sure, but I'm not positive it is. I mean, I don't believe it is damaging to those roots. So I mean, maybe we could just have a massive, like the valley used to be back in the 20s, when it did flood over, we could just flood the valley, except flood the farms and recharge the aquifer with that excess water during our major, major flood years. Just an idea, Michael.
Appreciate that, Milt. Thank you.
Thanks for the comments, Milt. We appreciate them as always. Any additional questions for Herb out there on his public outreach update? Any additional questions for Herb out there on his public outreach update? Okay, see none, we'll move to item F, our agenda items for the evening. Number one, groundwater well permitting proposed changes. And since Walt is not with us, I will turn that over to Lacy.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, board members. Lacy McBride, Merced County. So this is an item to update you on some proposed changes that the county of Merced is considering for its groundwater ordinance. And so this is, this only applies to the portions of the basin that are of course in the Merced County. And Walt will be able to speak more about similar permitting changes that they're considering up in Stansla County. So if it works for you, I'll just give you a quick summary of the current groundwater ordinance in case you're unaware of it. And then talk a little bit about the changes that county staff is proposing to the ordinance that, that we have in place. So over the past couple of months, we've actually, Merced County has reached out to all of the GSAs in the county, letting them know of those changes to try to receive some feedback from the GSAs. And so hopefully, as you think about this, I know it's going to be a lot of information today, but as you think about it, you can get back to Merced County with any thoughts and feedbacks, feedback that, that you guys have as well. So back in two thousand and fifteen, the county the groundwater mining and export ordinance. And this was intended to be a bridge towards sigma. Back in two thousand and fifteen, the county knew that sigma was coming. They knew that GSAs were going to be formed and groundwater sustainability plans were going to be in place. And so they put this ordinance in place to limit excess mining as a bridge in order to, to get to sigma. So the ordinance limits mining essentially by prohibiting any new wells in the county. No construction of new wells. There are a few exemptions to that, though. Domestic wells, two acre feet or less per year are allowed. An exemption under this ordinance, any replacement well that's replacing like for like. So a similar size well with similar pumping in the same aquifer can be replaced easily under this ordinance. And there's a exemption for what essentially water districts that have water resource management practices that also prohibit the mining of groundwater. And so water districts essentially can have an exemption for putting new wells in as well. So if there are no exemptions that fit a well application, a well permit application, it's considered a new well and it would be subject to an environmental evaluation under SEQA. And so that would be, the county would consider that a discretionary project. And so they would have to look at it kind of through the lens of SEQA. They would look at the cumulative impacts to the groundwater system, biology, noise, agriculture, all those things that, that SEQA requires. But the concern that a lot of applicants have when they hear that, that they would have to do a SEQA analysis, are there's, there's really a couple of big concerns. One is the cost. The county does not have any baseline information for an analysis like this. And so the cost would be really high. And we don't know what it would be because we don't know it, what all would go into that first evaluation. Of course, the, the first analysis is probably going to be the most expensive. And then any other permit that went through the SEQA process after that would kind of use that first analysis. However, nobody in Merced County since two thousand and fifteen has chosen to do that SEQA analysis. So there's this high cost. And then there's also no guarantee that going through the SEQA process would result in a well permit and in the applicant being able to drill the well. And so under this ordinance, the county has actually been pretty successful in, in being able to approve a lot of the well applications that come in. A lot of them are those replacement wells or they can fit into one of those other exemptions. There's a very small amount that we get to that point where the landlord or the property owner, the applicant chooses not to go through this SEQA process. It's possible, of course, that, that property owners simply are not applying for, for permits as well because they know that they're not going to get through that SEQA process. But we have been pretty successful in approving a lot of well permits up to this point. But today, now we have groundwater sustainability agencies formed in three of the four groundwater basins in Merced County. Groundwater sustainability plans have been adopted by those GSAs. And so GSPs are being implemented in three of the four basins here in Merced County. And so because of where we are now and that this ordinance was always intended to be a bridge, we're getting to the point where there have been a lot of discussions within the county on how do we start to transfer the decision-making process and the actual groundwater management from the county making the decision on where, where new wells are drilled and where new pumping is, how do we transfer that to the GSAs? So the proposal that, that we have in place right now, and again, like I said earlier, this is a staff proposal. We've talked to the Board of Supervisors about it. But of course, any change to the ordinance is going to have to come from the Merced County Board of Supervisors. But this proposal that we have today is essentially a new exemption in the ordinance so that well prohibition would stay in place. But there would be a new exemption that would cover any area that's within the jurisdiction of a GSA with an adopted GSP in a basin that is not in in a, in a basin that is considered in good standing by the Department of, of Water Resources, not on probation. And so this would not include the Terloc Basin until Terloc, the Terloc GSAs adopt their GSP by January twenty twenty two. And so this would be immediately go into place for the GSAs that have adopted GSPs, but for Terloc, there, there's a few more months extra. So this exemption that would, this new exemption, that's for any area within the jurisdiction of the GSA, would really require an applicant to go to the GSA first before they come to the county with their application. The applicant would go to the GSA, talk with the GSA about the well that they're looking to put in, the pumping. The GSA has the ability to ask all the questions of that potential project. And the GSA would then make the decision if this well construction project is consistent with their GSP and is something that they would approve. If the GSA would want to put some sort of limitations or consider, conditions on, on the approval of that, that that would happen by the GSA and that would be enforced by the GSA. But the, once the GSA decides that this is consistent or this project with these certain conditions are consistent with the GSP, they give an applicant the letter, a letter of approval. The applicant would come to the county of Merced with their application and their letter of approval from the GSA. And the county would be able to ministerially just issue that permit just quick over the counter. And so that shifts the decision-making and it really shifts the groundwater kind of management aspect of well permitting from the county to the GSA. And that's one of the things that the county has intended to do all along. And it's, it's one of those things that the, the Board of Supervisors think about in who really has the responsibility to manage groundwater. And under sigma, the GSAs were given the responsibility to manage groundwater. And so these decisions should be made by the GSAs. I think maybe I'll stop right there. So a, just a summary is that this is going to require the GSAs to look at new well applications and decide whether they're consistent with their GSP, decide whether they want to approve. Having a well there, issue a letter to the applicant who then comes to the county and would get the permit ministerially. And in an effort to provide as much information as possible to the GSAs, I have shared with Michael all of the well permits that have been processed by Merced County in the West Terloc Sub Basin GSA over the past month, so from May third until today. And there's been just one, there's been just one, though I, I do expect going into a dry year, there, there's probably going to be more. But I'll stop there and see if there's any questions or any clarifications I can give on kind of this proposal that we're thinking through.
Great, thank you very much, Lacy. I appreciate that. Any questions for Lacy at this time? See none? Okay. Anything final to add, Lacy? You good?
Um, I'm good. I guess the only thing I would say is it's a lot of information. I'm sure you guys are gonna think about it and think it over the next few days. And feel free to reach out to me with a phone call or by email. If you have any questions or if you have any thoughts on how to make this better, as the county, we want the GSAs to be successful with this. We want the county to be successful with this. And so any changes that, that we can make to make it even better, that's the sort of feedback I'm hoping to get from the GSAs.
Great, thanks, Lacy. Appreciate it. We'll move on then to item number two, which is approval of easement template and authorization to execute easements for well monitoring. Ms. Kincaid?
Hi, thank you. In your pocket, you should have the template easement. And recall, but I believe it was in February, but earlier this year, this board reviewed and approved a template agreement that was an access agreement. And this is an agreement where a landowner is allowing the West Terloc GSA to come on their land, drill a well, maintain that well and monitor that well. And in order to make sure that, that all the investment of, of the access agreement, it doesn't get erased when land ownership changes hands, meaning that if you go in and drill a well and have an access agreement with the landowner, if that landowner sells his land, it needs that commitment and access needs to run with the land. So in order to do that, there is an easement that will need to be recorded. The recording is done by the grantor, which is the landowner. So it's not the West Terloc GSA that will be recording this easement agreement. But the easement agreement in your pocket is for you to review and approve as a template for the West Terloc GSA to give to landowners so that they can record this easement in kind of tandem with the access agreement to make sure that the access agreement and the access to the wells that we're investing in and need to monitor in the future kind of run with the land. So I don't actually anticipate that the chair will have to execute this easement, but it's a template that we'll give to landowners. They will record it to the extent that the assessor's office needs us as a grantee to execute it. That is included, so we don't have to come back to the board. But that's the concept here is that you are approving the template, we're providing landowners and approving the chair to execute any easement to the extent the assessor's office requires it. So I'm happy to take questions. Again, a copy is in your pocket. And I think in red is highlighted where folks will need to include specific landowner information.
Perfect. Any comments or, or questions for Valerie on her presentation or on the agreement itself? If not, the recommended action is a motion approving the template easement as to form and authorizing the chair to execute the easement on behalf of the board as a grantee to the extent required. And I'll entertain a motion from, from any of the directors at this time.
Curtis, I don't, I don't want to interrupt you, but before you do that, I see a hand up, but that might be an old hand.
I was going to say the same thing. Milt, did you have a comment or question?
Make sure to unmute yourself, Milt.
Yes, I did have a question for Valerie. Valerie, in your presentation, you mentioned just the West Terloc Sub Basin. So will the East Terloc Basin implement something of this sort also for their part of the groundwater sustainability agency requirements?
There are wells going in on the East Terloc side. Of course, we are only the West Terloc GSA, so we can only approve this as to us. And also, I think a component of that is that some of the wells that are being funded, the actual maintenance and installation will be done by the West Terloc GSA because we're the grantee. So we're the, we are actually receiving grant funds to do some of those. So it's not, I guess, to answer your question, the wells won't be restricted just to the West GSA area. But this is just the West Terloc GSA taking action on this easement template. So it could, there could be wells located in different areas that allow us, the West Terloc GSA to have access and maintain. Did that answer your question?
Basically, I'm not really sure because this seems to be a requirement for all farmers. And not just, you know, if, I mean, all farmers in the West Terloc Sub Basin area.
No, no, no. So this is only on wells where we, where the West Terloc GSA has access to either install a new well or measure an existing well. So this is not for all landowners. It's for a very select number of wells. And all we're approving today is just the West Terloc template.
So, thank you, Valerie. That explains it. Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks, Milt. Thanks, Valerie. Any additional questions? Then I'll entertain that motion if someone would be so kind.
Curtis, I'll make a motion that's written on the recommended action.
I've got a motion by Alvarez, a second by Buck. Any additional comments from the directors? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Same sign? Okay, motion carries. Thanks for that report, Valerie. Appreciate it. Moving on to item G, comments from the board. Board members may provide a brief report on notable topics of interest. And at this point, we'll take any of those comments from the board members. I did want to, just to echo Michael's comments from earlier in the meeting. Thank Fay again for all of her time and dedication. And I, I know this job is, is not one that's easy and it's busy and it's fast and we got to be on top of things. But Fay has done an excellent job and, and from the, the board or speaking on behalf of the board, we just want to tell her thank you again for all the effort that she's put into this. So thank you, Fay.
Thank you, Curtis.
Seeing no other comments, no other hands raised. We will go ahead and call this meeting adjourned at five forty eight. The next meeting will be July eighth, twenty twenty one.